Summer's Day. It is Monday, June 20th, 2022. It is 5:30 PM and this is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. Notice, more than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. The copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Superintendent Weber, could you please confirm this meeting was not only posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. I'd invite you to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me recognize a quorum of our board with five of seven members present. Kirk Repolds is excused absent, and Nancy Justin will be joining us a little bit later. She's attending another governmental body meeting, so we'll see her shortly. Next, we consider approval of our agenda, which was published in advance. I would move approval of the agenda. Would there be a second?
Second.
Joel, thank you. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries, and we have an approved agenda. We are going to begin with a number of recognitions tonight related to tennis and track and field. And so we're excited to have these recognitions. And we're going to start with recognition of East High School Boys Tennis. And I believe Molly Hanks, our East Athletic Director, is going to walk us through the recognition. Good evening.
Good evening. I am excited to be here again. This is a really cool experience for us, especially to end the school year. I'm going to call up my head boys tennis coach, Seth Bryan. He just completed his seventh season here at East High School.
A big thank you to the board for having us and helping us to recognize these great student athletes across track and tennis. In front of us are Chase Cable on my left and Owen Schmidt on my right, both seniors. They made the Division One State Doubles Tennis Tournament this year, which was back in Madison. Owen made it last year when they got to play in Eau Claire. And Chase jumped up to one doubles course this year. They were friends for a long time, grade school classmates since fourth grade. Both varsity every year that they were able to play in high school. They were our two team leaders and captains, one in a very quiet way, one in a very vocal way, doing everything we could ask from them. They took sets off at least five teams that made it to the state tournament. So they were in no way overmatched, no matter who they played against. They were our unanimous choice of our sectional to be the special qualifier. And even won a set 6-0 against an Oshkosh West team at sectionals. They were second team all conference in one of the best conferences in the state for tennis. And I am just incredibly proud to be able to coach both these guys and to know them since junior high. It's going to be really tough to see them move on from our program. And really, my only regret is that we lost the year to COVID. But they were a great, great team for us this year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we're going to recognize members of East High School Boys Track and Field.
I'm going to call up my head coach, Tom Hogesper, who just completed his 16th season with the East Boys Track Program. Guys, I'm going to have you face the board.
You can go right there.
On either side of the podium. And make sure you kind of wave when he says your names, so they know.
All right. In front of you are four members of nine that we took to the state meet at the cross this year. In front of you is Ryan Gurgitz, who is a member of the 4x2 and 4x4 team. Grant Louders, who is a member of the 4x2 and 4x4 team. Tommy Conklin, who is a member of the 4x4 team. And Grant Miller, who is a member of the 4x4 team. I do have some guys that were not able to be here because they're at a religious retreat or they had vacations or anything. So those gentlemen are Matt Moran, Nick Taylor, Logan Greider, Nolan DeFour, and Tate Seifert. They were not available to be here. The 4x2 team, they were seeded 20th at the state meet and ended up placing 22nd. The 4x14 was seeded 16th and they ended up placing 16th in a very, very tough field at the state meet. One of my goals always for our team is to get as many guys to state as possible because like these guys can tell you the state meet is probably one of the most impressive meets in the state of Wisconsin. And I think they enjoyed their time up in the cross. So I thank you for recognizing them, and I think these guys were a great season.
Thank you. Now we'll recognize members of East High School Girls, Girls Track and Field.
And finally, I'm going to bring up my head girls coach, Brett Hartman, who just completed his first season with us.
Hi, I want to start by echoing what the other coaches said. Thanks for taking the time during this meeting to recognize our athletes for all their hard work. Like was said, this is my first year taking over the girls' track program. And in front of me here is Greta Zier, who was a senior. And she made a first-year coach, or as a first-year coach, my first season very easy. A lot of the challenges that I've had or could have had with getting to know a lot of the athletes and setting the right attitude right away. Greta kind of embodied everything that a coach would want in the program. About halfway through the season, she asked if she could try running the 300 hurdles for the, pretty much the first time. I think she ran it once maybe the previous year. And she ran a time that we knew was right on the edge of going to state. So that was an event that we focused on more and more. And she ended up qualifying in both the 100-meter dash and the 300-meter hurdles. And ended with a nice personal best time of a 100-dash jump at the state meet. So thank you, Greta, for a great season.
All right. Now we'll switch a bit and we'll recognize members of West High School Boys Track and Field. And Aaron Felber is going to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you. This is, uh, this is my favorite night to be here and recognize our student athletes. So I just want to congratulate both our boys and girls track and field team and their coaches and parents, guardians, for all your support throughout the season. And let's call up Coach Mike Herther to talk about the boys' track team.
So, again, thank you for spending time to go and give these kids an opportunity to go and play athletics and sports here at West Bend. I look at West Bend and its huge school, just to have all these opportunities for athletes to go and like exceed expectations. It's pretty incredible here. We have members here, starting on the right side. We got Mr. Tyler May, then we got Spencer Hyatt, Sam Schreiber, Mason Butters, and Frank Kunkfira. When going to state meet, we took a 200 runner, 400 runner, 800 runner, 4x4, a 4x8, and a high jumper. So in track and field, to take that many events, it was quite impressive and an unbelievable season to have. We are missing two members here in Jake Winkie and Joe Prost. Joe would want me to tell you that this would be a certain time attending because he made a big deal. He's like the only person in West Bend to go for three times this year. But the guys that we have here, they finished top 15 in all the events in the state track meet. And when I look at it as a coach, you kind of want to always compete. You want to go and win, but you're not going to remember what place it is 20 years down the road. And this group of guys right here, their friendship is going to be yours long. Memories that they've created this year, throughout the four years, I look at the older upperclassmen. They had COVID, they had the freshman year walking in not knowing what they were doing. Came on as senior leaders, junior leaders, captains, that kind. And I just looked at all the adversity they had going into the season and how they handled it through the season. And I couldn't be more proud of how well they did and know they were able to perform and put out in our community. So thank you guys again for their time and thanks for an awesome season.
All right, and also we are going to recognize members of West High School Girls Track and Field.
Excited to bring up Coach Matt Wanney to talk about the girls' track and field team for West.
Pretty proud leader of these girls that are up here right now. This is a nice cap for some of the girls that are here. We have a nice tradition as the West Girls. 11 years in a row, we've topped, we placed in the top three at conference, seven years of which we've won it. I didn't go back and look about the number of people that we've brought to state, but I do know that as far as Division One girls, we're probably in the top five teams in the state that have brought total number of volume of relays to state. So it's been a pretty impressive run, and we're going to keep going with that. So people that we have here, we have Nina Volkovich, who's part of our 4x4. Jenna Pierre, which is part of our 4x4. Lexi Williams, which is a high jumper. Morgan Povolansky, 4x4 and the Open Eight. And Lea Nagel, who's in our 4x4. So our 4x4 placed 14th overall. People missing here right now, Sarah Reimer. She finished third overall in the Open 400. She again broke our school record in the Open 400 when she was there. And Annabelle Donnering is also not here right now. But I just want to, you know, thank you again for allowing us to have these wonderful ladies in front of us here. They do represent West Bend. West Bend does very well. So anyhow, these are West and West Girls.
Well, congratulations, everyone. Photo op, that's good. While they're taking that photo op, just wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight. Probably when your coaches talked about, hey, how about coming to a school board meeting? Wasn't exactly the most exciting thing probably on your agenda for a summer evening. But we really appreciate it because, you know, you folks inspire us and remind us of why we're here, serving the district as well. So thank you. And just one last item, I know there are a number of seniors. Raise your hand if you're a graduating senior in this group. Congratulations on that too, and best wishes, good luck to you in your future endeavors as well. Everything you learned here about hard work and practice, making perfect, that'll serve you well no matter what you decide to do in life. So thank you again, everyone, for coming. This is where we pause and say, this is a public meeting of the school board, and we welcome people to sit in on the remainder of the meeting. But we also recognize, we have other things going on, so we're just going to pause for a moment. And if you wish to leave, this is a, this is a great time. But again, we encourage people to stay. Thank you again for coming, everybody. Appreciate it. All right, as the last guests here are exiting, next on our agenda is public participation. I have one participant comment card from Mr. Chris Thompson. I'll just pause. Are there any others not seeing him? So we've got one participant for public participation. And unless the board rejects, Mr. Thompson, I know that you've been presenting before, and my guest is very familiar with the provisions of Board Policy 1837, and he has three minutes to speak. If you'd like, I can read it for you, but otherwise, I think I will leave that. And the next three minutes are yours. If you can state your name and your relationship to the district.
Yeah, Chris Thompson, and I am a resident here and tax payer. And yes, I am familiar with the rules, so thank you. Real quickly, I just wanted to get up tonight because I know that you guys are going to be taking a vote on the preliminary, sorry, the preliminary budget for the 2022, 2023 school year. And I had a chance to, I was in the board meeting last, past time and got to hear Mr. Sarno present. I did ask him some follow-up questions afterwards. He was kind enough to send me some of the information back. And it's really more of just a question for this board this evening for your consideration before you guys go into vote. But as I was looking at just kind of the top line revenues and expenditures, first of all, kudos to Mr. Sarno. I'm sure it's no easy task to try to balance the budget year over year, especially when you don't, there's a lot of unknowns out there. From now until October, I recognize that this is a difficult job. But with that being said, I noticed that because of the ESTR grant that we're going to be getting, this is the one-time last installment payment that we're getting from the federal budget, we're seeing about $3.6 million over last year in terms of the revenue coming through from the federal ESTR grant. I also noticed that within the expenditures, it balances everything out, but 64% of that $3.6 million extra money is going to be allocated towards salaries and benefits. And what caused the question in my head was really more, I remember Mr. Sarno talking about, oh, we are actually going to be reducing staff due to enrollment and things like that. So it just kind of created a question in my head of why are our salaries and benefits going up when our staffing is actually going down? And the question, and again, I want to be respectful here because everybody loves a raise. And I'm sure we've got some very well-deserving staff members for raises and stuff, especially in times like this. But I just want to pose the question to the board of, is this the highest priority area for us to allocate these funds to? We've had a lot of discussions over the last school year, concerns about facilities and their upkeep, concerns about security. And I just wanted to throw that out to the board for your consideration before you go to take this vote. It might be something that we need to evaluate and decide whether or not that money might be better put towards some other things that we need to plan for for the next few years too, because we're going to be looking at that money not coming back next year. And, you know, what to do about some of the big questions that we have to answer for ourselves as a district and as a community. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is our consideration of our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have minutes of the June 6th, 2022 regular board meeting. Nine contracts and seven resignations, no retirements. Renewal of insurance policies for district provided life, long-term disability, voluntary short-term disability, and voluntary supplemental life. And also revenues and expenses in the aggregate, July 2021 through May of 2022. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would move approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tommy. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on then to our reports. And our first report is a school report on the high school from Ms. Laura Jackson.
Actually, I'd like to invite up to the podium our principals and one of our assistant principals and our athletic directors from the high schools. So we have Mr. Val Schloss, who is principal at West High School. He's been the principal there for five years. John Raff, who's been the principal at East High School for the last three years. I have Zach Daniels, who is one of our assistant principals at East, and he has completed two years at East. Then we have our athletic directors here for each high school. And we have Aaron Felber and Molly Hanks. And so these gentlemen are going to share some of the things happening at East and West High School and some of their goals and how things have been going this year. So come on up, people. You can use the arrows. Or no, you can use the arrow too.
So I didn't want to shortchange Mr. Daniels. Mr. Daniels has three years at East High School.
Oh!
And Mr. Schloss left his notes at the high school, so he had, well, here he is. Mr. Kiso himself was our assistant principal. Mr. Kiso is finishing his second year at West. Glad to have them with us. I know Mr. Wood had a family event tonight, couldn't drag him away from baseball. So I believe he's coaching and helping us. So we'll kind of get started here. Do I go to present or do I clip down? So with our pyramid, we go through what guides our school improvement planning. You know, it all starts off with student learning. That's our, our big priority in any building that is in the school district and the first thing that we'll report on. We then go to engagement and customer satisfaction, safe and secure, and effective and efficient. So at the high school, unlike at other buildings within the district, you'll notice that we have an ACT goal. STAR is with ninth and 10th grade students, and it's not with all of our students. Therefore, we primarily focus on ACT. And we've looked at the ACT benchmarks for college readiness. So if you've looked at the ACT benchmarks for college readiness, you would see something around English composition or English as it's worded within the ACT. As an 18 is the score that they're aiming for for college readiness. Math is about a 22, reading is a 22, science, it breaks into 23. Standing is a 26, I believe, and ELA is a 20. So when we look at where we set our goals this year, we looked at two subcategories. We looked at ELA, we looked at complex text. So that's if you had a text that was long and you had to put key ideas and details together that were more than two sentences apart. One key thing that I need to mention with ACT data is that it's still embargoed. Therefore, we can't go exactly into the description of the scores. However, please invite us back when the time comes that they're unembargoed. ACT scores range from 0 to 36.
Yeah, I'm just going to interrupt you to explain. We've, our general public might not understand what we're talking about. And embargo is meaning there's some preliminary data for the assessments that we're taking this spring. But it's under embargo, meaning it's being reviewed, it's being held. We have to do a specific release date. So we'll not only release it publicly in our news, et cetera, but you're saying once we can publicly share, invite you back in for our follow-up?
Absolutely. Bring us back. We'd love to come back. 5:30 on Mondays are our favorite time to be here. So when we look at ACT scores more in depth, you look at the 0 to 36. Area schools, you're looking at usually a score of 18 to 22. That is the range. We did have ACT prep for all students this year, which I think was a big thing when we talk about how do we get our students to that college and career benchmark. So as I was saying kind of earlier, in ELA, we looked at complex text. And in math, we looked at a subcategory of geometry. And what you do with the ACT is you can't just go from one year to the next, right? Because it's a different population of students. So we looked at cohort scores. And we looked at specifically the ACT Aspire, which students take in grades nine and 10. And that gave us kind of a benchmark of, hey, we want to see 10% in this area so that we can meet those college and career readiness benchmarks.
All right.
My turn. We're going to stay in the student learning bucket. And as you know, the mission of the West Bend School District is to prepare all students for college readiness and/or career success. So I just want to highlight a couple of things as you're looking. You can see up on the screen. At the high schools, the West Bend high schools have traditionally been one of the leaders of offering advanced placement classes. Right now at the high school, we offer 24. We did this last year. That sometimes fluctuates. We'll sometimes offer more classes depending on student interest. We do have staff that can teach additional AP classes. But it's a real, it's something we like to celebrate at the high school. And one of the things that's pretty awesome about what's going on is not just what we, that we offer the classes, but our students do well with the classes. We're a Level Two school, pay-setter school. That's not given to a lot of high schools around the state. Granted, we'd love to be Level One, and we're moving in that direction. But a Level Two pay-setter school means that 20% of our students take at least one AP class. And 65% of our students who take AP classes pass their AP exam. That is significant, significant. To be a Level One pay-setter school, 30% of our students would take one AP class and 70% would pass an AP exam. Our passing rate at the high school right now is 76%. That exceeds a lot of schools around the state. We're also adding AP computer science principals in 2023, '24, this upcoming school year. So one of our staff will be trained in that class. 98 students earned an honors diploma this year. Well, what does that mean? It means that you have to, it's awarded to students to take a minimum, nine credits of coursework, in-advanced placement, project-led way, honors, transcripted credit, which I'll explain a little bit. Early college credit for Start College Now, and I'll explain those as well. During their four years of high school. And those students would earn at least a 3.4 grade point average or better. So that's, that's quite a bit of students. The number of student, I'm sorry, the number of credits this year that were earned by students taking early college credit, which is, it's a program for students who want to start earning credit at the universities in our, in our system, was 151. You can qualify for a class like that if we don't have any match at the high school. So while we're a very comprehensive high school and we offer a lot of things, some of our students start taking classes in the university system. Same thing holds true for the Start College Now. 98 credits were earned by our students this year in the Wisconsin Technical Schools. Transcripted credit courses. Those are classes that you can take at the high school where you can earn credit towards college. We offer 29 classes. And those are primarily, well, they're all in areas of CTE. And you can see it's business and informational, technology, family and consumer sciences, health sciences, technology, and engineering. Any questions on the college readiness column? All right. By the way, advanced placement this year, 813 exams were taken by our students. That's a lot of exams. Yes?
It's a very impressive number. And I'm wondering if you could compare the number of AP classes we offer to how many AP classes our neighbors offer? Because I feel like we excel in that area.
Well, we do excel in that area. I know in the area, there are other Level Two schools. There are no Level One schools. I don't know how many some of our neighbors offer, but I've been told that we offer more than our neighbors. So there are 38 AP classes that you can offer in your high school. And for us to offer 24, 25, 26 each year is impressive. Good question. By the way, if a student chooses to take an AP test, those classes, or those tests cost $90. If you pass the AP test, most universities, not all, but most universities will give you college credit thing. So that's another way our students are earning college credit by taking advanced placement coursework and then passing the AP exam. And there are students in this system, I've known students because we've worked here a long time, that have started, the second semester sophomores in a four-year university, because of the amount of AP classes they're taking. Imagine the savings mom and dad probably really like to see there. Any other questions about college readiness? All right, we'll be going over to career readiness. Want to talk to you a little bit about work-based learning experiences. We offer a number of students opportunities to do youth apprenticeships. We have a number of students doing business co-op, childcare co-op, culinary co-op. Co-ops are very similar to youth apprenticeships. You're getting their education on-site, and then they're going into the labor force. You're going to a job, and you're applying what you've learned at school. Project Search is another really neat work-based learning experience for students. And that's for students with disabilities. Not a lot of schools offer Project Search. And we've got a terrific special education department and people that brought Project Search to the high school. It's a DPI program. But our students with disabilities go into the workforce, or they're mentored, they're trained. And then, you know, we'd like to see our students with disabilities transition into the labor market successfully. We do a tiny house build. I don't know how many people on camera know that, but that's working with Habitat for Humanity. And thank you, Moraine Park and Pete Rutter for letting us work out there, doing the tiny house build out there. We offer a CNA program again with Moraine Park. We are going to do an EMT course this upcoming year. I drove some students up to Kewasken. We're partnering with the Kewasken School District and Moraine Park. You know, there's a theme, and it's going to happen more and more frequently in the years to come. And then you have to build partnerships, right? Because you can't otherwise offer these things. So we've got a fair number of students from West Bend and Kewasken who will be earning credit. They'll, they'll actually be certifying EMTs when they go to the class, the classes. It's quite expensive. We also offered this last year, small animal, small animal bed sciences up at Kewasken High School. Again, partnering with them and Moraine Park. And then our students can earn professional certifications taking some of our classes in, for example, foods, surf state, or the automotive classes that we offer, some of the tech ed classes. Moving on. Any questions about career readiness? So what's nice about being a comprehensive high school, we can offer all these really critical things. Our students experience these courses, and they do well. By the way, we are adding, adding a tech ed teacher at the high school next year. That's how popular those classes have become. So we're gonna move on to another bucket, and that's engagement and customer satisfaction. What you're looking at is data from this last year, and things that we wanted to highlight, and other things we saw as opportunities. So one of our highlights was the fact that our students, I'm sorry, our staff feel like we have a real interest in the professional growth, which we do. But one of our opportunities is our staff is not currently satisfied with their current workload. They're feeling stressed, they're feeling, they're just feeling the pressure of trying to do so many things. Because a lot of our, our staff, not only do they teach, but they also do after-school activities and things of that nature, or they might have other jobs. Some of the things that we're doing to address some of the opportunities we have. And it wasn't related to workload this year, but it was related to celebrating and recognizing our staff. That was another area that our staff said we could probably do a better job of. So a couple of things we do at the high schools, we do something called culture rounding, a lot of our schools do that now. But it started, John actually started that at Green Tree, but it's been done at the high school for the last four or five years. That's where we sit down with all staff members at least once a semester. And that's not just teaching staff, that's all staff members, and we just check in with them, see how they're doing. Talking about workload, but also talking about family, and talking about professional growth, what are they focused on? John and I also had office hours that we committed at the high schools. That sounds crazy, but in our offices, we're constantly being interrupted. So we found places in the high school, we let the staff know that after school on Mondays from two-thirty to three-thirty uninterrupted, you guys, you know, people could drop in and they could talk to us. We also are really focused on our current schedule. I'm sorry I'm talking long, but there's a lot of stuff here. Our schedule at the high school is something that we wanted to have a discussion with our staff about, so we started a high school scheduling goal team. And that's, that work's going to continue on, see if we want to continue to operate in the seven-period day or do something different. And then we started a staff of the week whereby students, families, community, or other staff members could nominate anybody on our staff to be staff of the week. So that could be teachers, it could be parents, it could be food service workers, it could be bus drivers, and that was a real popular addition at the high school. For student engagement, our focus is creating a well-creaming environment for students at the West Bend High Schools. And you see a number of the things that we do. I want to thank, John came to the high schools, and one of the things that's kind of unique to the West Bend High Schools, I don't know how many do it around here, but we have a military signing day for our students that are joining the military, much like the athletic signings that you probably have heard about or you've seen in social media. By the way, I want to put in a plug for athletics, it was cool seeing those young people up here today, and I know you guys see a lot of our student athletes. But we have a West Bend student, a college world series playing right now, so. For the second time in the last five years, we've had a division-one player playing the college world series. That's pretty, pretty cool. Oh, I'm continuing on. I do have this slide. Want to talk about safety and security. You know, student learning can't take place unless schools are safe. And one of the things that we experienced this last year, and I came and talked to the school board, some of you, was kind of a rocky start we got to the year. Not unlike other places, we had, we had some students coming back to school who hadn't been at school in a while. Actually, in fact, over three hundred virtual students were returning to our building. The transition was tough, and I saw a slide, and I'll put this in context. Our tenth graders, the last time they had experienced an uninterrupted school year, uninterrupted by COVID, was when they were in seventh grade. So for a few years, they were without the routine and the normalcy of what a normal school year with all its celebrations and routines and other things would typically have. So they missed out on that, but as you can see from this chart, behavior, the highest incidence of behavior occurred in the fall, and then steadily went down. I want to highlight a couple of things. Students with one or less major behavioral referral was almost ninety percent. Eighty-nine point four percent of our students had one or less major referral. And a major referral is something like profanity directed towards somebody.
Disruption in the classroom.
Disruption in a classroom, something of that nature. When you think about that, that's impressive that nine out of ten students did not get a major referral, or there was one or less. Students with one or less minor behavioral referrals, that number even increases to ninety-one point three-two percent of our students. So overall, what that tells us is our student body is behaving, but we have some students who are, you know, repeatedly maybe not following the rules. And we're working with those students, and we take, you know, we take a lot of opportunity to try to correct that behavior. Some of the things we've done, for example, our student success contracts, we've reinforced positive behaviors with the West Bend School District play goal team, which is a very positive thing. But we've brought in a lot of families, a lot of parents, and we worked on success contracts. We have done wraparound services with kind of social services involved. We might get law enforcement involved, we might get other agencies involved, like Elevate, if we suspect there's alcohol or drugs, you know, drug abuse, so. And you can see up there, the top three types of behavior this year were minor personal tech, cell phones being used by students, insubordination, and disrespectful behavior. The locations where the majority of this stuff happens is in the classroom. And I know that we've been working with our teachers on classroom management and, you know, interventions, hallways, and the office. And the office, office is a little misleading. We write referrals, but we can't determine where the offense, it was like, took place in multiple areas, and we're not quite clear. Let's say we heard of something, but we can't pinpoint a location. We write the referral in the office, so it goes down to the office. I don't want people to think, well, kids are acting out in the office, and they're misbehaving, and they're out of control.
A lot of insurance.
Yeah. A lot of that, like Zach just said, I don't know if you heard that, is insurance-related. And a lot of work is being done by our assistant principals on insurance as well, with insurance conferences, going to court, working with law enforcement, so. And then the top three times are listed up there as well.
So I can't move on without saying I stole culture rounding from Lenny Hanson, he is in the building, so. I have to fess out to that when he was at Jackson Elementary. He had one good idea, and I took it from him. So I just want to bring that out.
Takes one good.
Yeah.
Only one.
But so at the high school this year, you know, you go back to student learning, we had a big focus on high-performing teams. We started our year off with kind of looking at our leadership team as a building, and, you know, what do we look at? How do we analyze, how do we show up to meetings? How do we make sure that they're effective and efficient? So that when you come to a meeting, you go, that made sense why we were meeting, why we showed up, and why we talked about attendance data, behavior data, special education data. You know, we're always constantly analyzing and looking at how does the school operate, how can we improve things? Within that, as mentioned before, within our customer engagement and satisfaction head pocket, the scheduling team this year. We, we don't do that on our own, we work with the superintendent, we work with cabinet, we work also with an external facilitator to make sure that we can be involved as well as conversations go on. And then ultimately what it all stems down to, and you'll get high-performing teams, professional learning communities, and group of course-like teachers getting together, whether it be biology, and algebra, geometry, and going, okay, how are students doing, what can we do for those students that have exceeded the benchmarks? What can we do for students that are struggling, and how do we adjust our instruction to make sure that all students are successful? Excellence for all is really something that comes through the PLC framework. Student supports, so on the right, there's a little image, and that is from the class of twenty-three. I always gotta go the opposite way. But so they each on a Canvas page, and that's our learning management system. Google Classroom used to be popular, and in fact, COVID kind of changed that. We used to be a Google Classroom and Canvas building, and the feedback from the community was, we want one platform to go to, we don't have to jump between two platforms. So Canvas is a learning management system that we use at the high school, and each student is a member of their class year page. So you get kind of information, you'll have the junior year experience, so what are you gonna go through your junior year? When do you begin looking at setting up college visits? What are the opportunities that lie in front of you? That junior year is a huge year. ACT prep, our college and career center is a huge part of the high school. Making sure that we get people into the building so you can become familiar with what opportunities lie ahead of you. Quarterly, we hold class meetings, and that's kind of a second tier of reminding. We want to make sure that students are aware of what's going on at their grade level, what are the opportunities as well. It's kind of that reinforcing. As much as we always want to make sure they're checking their email, sometimes it doesn't happen, and that's okay. And that's our job to make sure that they understand what is happening and what is upcoming. Making sure that, like, your junior year, you're aware of ACT prep opportunities. We have method test prep at the high school, which is an opportunity for students away from the building to be able to go in and practice ACT questions. We use that then within classrooms as a heat map to say, hey, these are the kind of questions we're working on. This is probably the next step that you need to take so that teachers can help students as they are ready for it. On the ACT, or, you know, ACT Aspire that I talked about earlier, Crew is a transition program that we have at the high school. It's really that welcomes our freshmen into the building. You're talking about your junior class, usually that are becoming seniors, those junior seniors help really with overall mentoring of those students. Walking into a building after going five, six, seven, eight, and then nine, twelve, those are a lot of transitions. And we want to make sure that when you get to the high school, you're aware of what are the expectations, but also what are the opportunities that you have? If you go back a couple slides, you can't touch upon the opportunities without pointing out, we have thirty-two athletic teams, we have fifty clubs and co-curriculars. We have all these opportunities that are in front of you. We have an orchestra that played with Mark Wood of Trans-Siberian Orchestra this year. If you don't realize those things, and the juniors and the seniors are the ones with the knowledge on it, you're not gonna capture everything that we have to offer at the high school. Trying to touch upon it as far as, you know, it's a comprehensive experience, you have all these API offerings. We don't want you to miss that in the hustle and bustle of the lives of these students. Some of these students go to school, they then go to practice, and they get home, and then it's time to do the homework, and sometimes those opportunities as far as what's going on can be missed. And we also had an academic success center this year, helping a lot of those students that have struggled previously get support in ELA, MAP, and social studies. So then, and we also have science, but we did not have a dedicated science teacher in that space, so I left that off a little bit. But going into their Canvas page and going, hey, this is what's coming up, here are the next steps that you need to take in order to improve your grades, and really to improve upon your success at the high school. So those are some of the things that are going on, you know, it takes a team to really do it at the high school. We have over two hundred staff members, and I appreciate the work of Mr. Schloss, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Piso, and Ms. Gennaro, who is unfortunately leaving us to go to Waukesha.
And you have two behind you that are athletic players?
Yeah, of course.
Part of your administrative team?
They are, they're, yeah, athletics is a, I mean, I couldn't stand up and say, you know, it's an S E, speak basketball last year. But yeah, absolutely, it is, it's a team of eight, and it's a team that has to communicate constantly because a lot of things are happening, right?
All right, last thing, I want to, I know we've gone a little long, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things up on the screen. Starting with the upper right-hand corner, what you're looking at up there are students that were in Patty Newton's Project Lead the Way classes. That's the white, that's the white coat ceremony for students who take four classes in biomedical sciences. So those are students who are interested in the medical profession, and if they take that sequence of courses, they earn a white coat and they do a ceremony. And the gentleman on the far right in that photograph is a doctor that came to speak to the students. We've got Gerald Sorcey's students who participated in the ADAM competition this, this last year. That's the Automobile Dealers Association of Metro Milwaukee. We finished in the top six. When you think about it, there are over ninety-plus automobile programs in the state. That's an impressive finish for those students. We've got students in the upper right-hand corner holding their, talked about certifications before, they're holding their serve-safe certification. So those students have demonstrated that they know about restaurant cleanliness, operations, just everything related, related to, like food service. And so they earned those certifications. By the way, the Nifty Nibble, I know you guys already know this, but they finished second in the state last year in the restaurant competition, which is their highest finish. The lower left-hand corner, we talked about ninety-eight students getting honors diplomas. Those were the students who earned them on stage. Those were east and west students combined, and we had nineteen ninety-four west graduate, Dr. Chantamess, come and speak to the students. We also talked about our military signing, and we've got one of our students up there signing P D B work to go into the Marines. And in the lower right-hand corner, John had talked about Mark Wood from Trans-Siberian Orchestra coming, and he worked with our students, and they went and spoke together. So we've got a lot of awesome things, awesome kids, awesome staff at the West Bend High Schools. Questions? The assistant principals will answer those.
Any questions, Joel?
Under engagement and customer satisfaction, the question of, are you satisfied with your current workload? And only forty percent say yes, so in other words, sixty percent of the staff feel overworked. Are there certain areas that you can pinpoint as to why that is? Is it, is it because the high school starts at, you gotta be up there at six-thirty in the morning, and it's early, and that's, that's hard on employees? Is it, they don't have enough planning period or enough planning time?
It's, it's one of the reasons, Joel, that we started that West Bend High School scheduling goal team, to take a look at different high school schedules. And perhaps that might slow the day down for some of our teachers. And so that team is comprised of teaching staff and other staff as well. So that is one of the, one of the things we hear from some of our teachers is they teach six out of seven during the day. And that's pretty hard when you only have a five-minute break in between classes. So we're looking at other schedules that may not entail having a seven-period day. A lot of people do a lot of different things, so we're looking at various options.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You outlined various career readiness opportunities, co-ops, apprenticeships. Looking five years down, what, down the road, what else might we see on here? There have to be some interesting other opportunities in the, in the future for learning experiences. Kind of gaze into the crystal ball, what do you think might be next?
You're putting me on the spot.
Absolutely.
I think what, like I said earlier, I think we're gonna do a lot more community partnerships. And I think we're gonna partner with other local schools as well. I'll give you an example of a community partnership. I met with the Washington County Historical Society, and I sat down with two of the people that work there, one of them being their director. They talked about summer camps for students. They said, could we do a summer camp for your students, or could we do workshops during the school year? I think community education is gonna become really huge. And they said, what's in the tale? They said, for six weeks, students would come to the museum, and they would learn about local history. And then as their capstone project, they would put together, or they would, well, they got to put together an exhibit. How cool is that? You know, so really making students historians and getting them excited about history. So they sat down with our history teachers, and we're talking about doing some kind of partnership with them. You know, we got Moa here in town. I think you're gonna see education happen outside the four walls of the classroom more so as well. With, like I said, workshops and community education, getting adults in our community involved in co-learning that their own kids or grandchildren are doing. So I think it's, I think it's an exciting time. So that, that's what I would tell them.
I like the sounds of that, but I'd also like to see us explore a little more, because I've had two kids who've graduated, and one will be a senior coming up. I'd like to see us explore. I'd like to see us explore more internship possibilities for the kids. I mean, I think colleges do a nice job of that. I know some of the colleges will even require one or two internships before you can even graduate. So I would love to see students, you know, who are thinking about a career. I think it's, it's tough. I mean, there's no student in the world who wants to hear me say this, but I do think if, if high school could be five years and that last year was literally spent on career exploration, because how many of us have gone to college and said, ugh, I don't wanna do this for the rest of my, I mean, you know, like to try it before you buy it. So, hey, I'm interested in marketing, is there a way to get someone an internship? Or I'm interested in auto mechanics or really any of those things?
We, we have talked with our education partners around the area as well as businesses. Because a lot of students that do youth apprenticeship often don't have an interest maybe if they find out, you know, hey, you know what, try it, see if you like it. But true internships and moving in that direction, because our employers are saying, yeah, we get these kids to work here, but then they're not staying with us beyond, you know, the twelfth grade year. So how do we, how do we flip it from being like YA to like a true internship? And so we've talked to local businesses about making that flip.
I, I think also at the high school, you know, you're gonna see changes within the departments as well. Like autos, I think we had an electric vehicle lined up and Gerald wanted to buy it and they sold it. You know, but I think that some of those simple things, I think you also look at technical reading, you know, so that when you prepare to go through a high school, you might see different pathways that are explored so that you are prepared for life after high school so that you don't go to college. I mean, I think we talked about it earlier. You know, you take all those AP assessments and those save a great deal of money. However, what are the, what's your real outcome that you're desiring and are you really in that area? Because I know I change majors multiple times and that didn't help anything, you know, when it comes down to it. And, and things are getting more expensive and we wanna make sure that when our students graduate, they truly are prepared for the workforce or wherever they may be going. Because the needs of the job market are constantly changing.
Right, and I don't, I don't wanna speak for the district, but I think we need to get representation from industry around here and put together a coalition of people that can serve as kind of our sounding board and be mentors for our students. I believe we get more adult mentors in our building, weren't just teachers, but also people in industry. Because that's what I've heard from people is invite us in. You know, once you have a connection in a, in a factory or in a restaurant or at the hospital, you know, the students, their, their brains start going, yeah, this is something I wanna keep doing, right? So.
Well, and so many of our employers, not just, you know, within West Bend, but Washington County, even really the whole state of Wisconsin are so desperate for workers. You know, the idea that, you know, you could convince a seventeen-year-old who maybe really didn't know what they wanted to do, you know, into a career path. And, you know, I'm sure some of these employers would even help with their secondary education or apprenticeships or whatever.
Well, G P S Partners does that for us right now. We send students offsite, they get educated at an education center and then they get sent to different, you know, different factories where they explore different types of manufacturing. And then if they're lucky and people like them, they get hired and start making good money as soon as they graduate from east or west. Tommy?
I think that education center piece is key to the internship and co-op program because at Delta Defense we've had, we've been very pleased with the success of the Project Search opportunity for the students as well as us. And I think the reason why it is successful is because of the teachers and the education that these students get before they get to us. Because in the past, what's been proposed to us is, hey, would you like to, you know, have an internship program or a co-op program? But then it's put on us to figure it out. And we're busy, yeah, especially if we love the labor, we're busy getting work done and you can't just drop somebody in our lap and we're not babysitters. So the work that the district does to prepare these students and help them transition into our offices or factories or whatever, that's what's gonna get us to say yes.
Well, YA students, kids and students in G P S, those programs, they are completely vetted before they are sent out into the labor market and work in different places. And they have got to demonstrate, you know, maturity. There is, you know, there's a constant check-in with them, their, their parents. You know, like you said, you just, I don't want to send somebody out into the workforce because they just wanna make some money and they're not, they're not prepared. So our teachers are doing a really good job in-house too of really preparing students for, you know, the world of work. So as you can see, you know, we're, like I said, our tech ed program is going by one teacher. You know, it wasn't that long ago in the mid-nineties when people were thinking about Rick Ben Updike, tech ed department of the high schools. So glad they did it.
Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation, the discussion tonight, we appreciate it.
I know that was thorough.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, our next report is the Curriculum Committee Report. And I believe Melanie Ernitz is gonna give that, Melanie, what do you think?
All right, yeah, so the last curriculum committee meeting, we met at nine-thirty on the fourteenth of June. The first thing we did was to select a curriculum committee chair, which was me. And then we went over the annual parental notice of academic standards. Basically, the Wisconsin State statute requires that parents and guardians are notified of academic standards annually. So we reviewed the annual notice that these standards have already been previously approved by the school board. So it's just the annual presentation of those standards. Then we went through the K through twelve literacy implementation update. We went over the goals and the progress and planning of implementation of new resources like the Fuentes and Pennell and Calkins as well as Amira and Lexia. And also discussed some professional learning opportunities available for staff to better support student literacy. And it sounds like the interest in these courses are high amongst the teachers for, for supporting them. We went over the textbook review process. There's the different books, reading the academic standards, the input of teachers and public review and then it goes to board approval. There's currently several books in review and open to the public. They might be closed by now, but the French classes and some of the AP classes are up for review. And we also went over using movies in the classroom and discussed how it can enhance, different ways they can enhance student learning. Some are documentaries, sometimes you might have like, you know, a regular full-length feature film. But I, we were both, Tommy and I, impressed with how thorough the district is with their expectations and that they need to be related to the curriculum. There's approval of administration and communication and parent approval and leaving like a very detailed description of the content and the purpose of the films as well as the reading. Some, most things would need permission, but some things might not. For example, if you're watching like a YouTube video of the letter V, you know, for a little kid's classroom, you're not gonna necessarily need approval for that. But if you're watching a clip of Saving Private Ryan in the War and Peace class, then there would definitely be, you know, parent permission involved in that. Our next meeting will be on July nineteenth at eight-thirty a.m. And we are planning to meet the third Tuesday of every month at eight-thirty.
Thank you for the report and for agreeing to serve as chair, I appreciate that. Any questions for Melanie? All right, we'll move on then to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Limer?
Just to echo the thank you from the board for our student athletes for representing West Bend at state-level competitions, we appreciate that. And for those watching in the public, you saw the high school presentation. You saw some of the strands of coursework that our students are coming prepared with. So if you have an opportunity in the community or a connection for a work-based learning, job shadow or internship, reach out to one of the principals or myself to get connected. Summer school began on June thirteenth, so working through some logistics of, you know, drop-off, that's always fun and getting new routines. But our four K and first grade students are at Decorah, grades two and four are Green Tree, grades five and seven at Silverbrook and high school at the high school's building. I know we had some hot temperatures last week. We're looking at some hot ones in the forecast. Those are air-conditioned buildings, so sometimes certainly there's a projected heat advisory for tomorrow. Instead of doing an outdoor recess, we'll do indoor, we'll monitor kids. We've advised staff around what to look for as far as heat exhaustion, signs of heat stroke. We do have nurses onsite at each of our campuses, healthroom staff, every single one, as well as a clinic for our own staff. Because certainly, you know, Dave Ross has got buildings and ground staff outside doing things. So, so we're our cadence of that weather. If at any time a family doesn't want to send their child, they prefer to stay home, that's fine. Just let us know about ten minutes. But those first sessions are running July seventh or fifteenth, depending on what grade level. So new this year, we have that second session. So just looking at this year's enrollment, we have seven hundred and fifty-eight students in the first session and an additional two hundred students in that second session. So there's still some opportunities if you wanna join us in that second session. Take a look at the website, connect with Erin Faust, our program director. So this is an exciting time of year. We, we still have one foot in the year that we're finishing. We have one foot in the interim year of summer school and then we're planning for the year ahead. So just, we're working on finalizing things for back-to-school information. I know maybe it's too soon, but you know those stores are gonna start having deals. So take a look at our website, our district website or school websites. Your supply lists are out there up. We'll, as we start getting things like picture order forms, different calendars, meet and greets, we'll start adding those. Your schools will also communicate with you directly. But it's just a busy time and I know people wanna take advantage of deals when they're looking at supplies. So those things are up and ready for families. Summer is a busy time for our facilities maintenance. So we've got a lot of roof repairs starting, different section replacements, Green Tree and high school specifically. We also have some lighting in our fieldhouse, other lights getting transitioned to LED, a lot of door replacements, some bathroom remodels. I recall that you reviewed, Dave Ross brought forward those projects. We had some preliminary approvals so that we could go through bidding process, et cetera, and get a jump on that summer work. So that is in, in full swing. McLean will have a comprehensive bathroom. It's kind of part two of their bathroom renovation, that part one was a summer. And then replacement of some playground equipment. And I know we were looking at lockers and, and other pieces. So that is in full swing. In addition to our summer school activities and those pieces, take a look, as the high school principal said, for any of our school levels, whether it's Silverbrook Badger, some of the elementaries, check out those school websites, get in touch with the principals or the staff. The sheer amount of opportunities for whatever you're interested in, whether it's athletics or an extracurricular or just a club that the schools offer, start thinking about your interest. I know they'll highlight those at kind of back-to-school nights. But start checking it out and, and planning for the year ahead. So that's all that I have to report.
Great, thank you. Any questions for superintendent? Thanks for the report. All right, we'll move then to our one and only discussion item for tonight, and that is French, Advanced Placement Chemistry and Advanced Placement Environmental Science textbooks. Nora Jackson is here to walk us through that.
Good evening and thank you for having me tonight. Melanie Burgett, in the Curriculum Committee Report, shared some of the process behind textbook review. And we have had currently three different textbook series. Let me get that. French is a series of textbooks. It's for our French one, two, three, and four classes. And singular textbooks for AP Environmental Science. Again, AP stands for Advanced Placement and Advanced Placement Chemistry. Each of these subjects has textbooks currently in place that are needing revision based on the length of time that it has been since they have been adopted. So for example, in French, the series that we had is the series that was originally put in place when we went to the long-range model for our world languages. So during the fourteen, fifteen school year, we implemented a process for our students to begin taking French while attending Silverbrook. And the series that we had been using was, we began using it at that time. It's time to revise that for a number of reasons. Some of those being access to the digital tools that we had with that series. Again, it's alignment with the actful standards that are in place for world language and giving students really that opportunity to develop across all areas of language and communication and comprehension. The series that we're proposing is called Bendit. Our French teachers had examined multiple textbooks and this was strongly recommended by them as the number one choice, partially for the ease of use for the teacher, but most significantly for what it provides for the students, the way the material is presented, and then how it scaffolds throughout the years. That was the most significant reason they preferred the Bendit textbooks. Any questions on the French series of textbooks that are equally published?
French level one through four, so level one is fifth grader?
Yeah, in West Bend, in level one is taught from fifth through seventh grade typically. You could enter at level one as a high schooler. So if you had taken another language or you're new to the district, you might want to start taking level one at, for the first year, freshman year or your junior year of high school. So it's taught in fifth and sixth grade, it is first semester. And seventh grade, it would be second semester of level one. And level two is taught in eighth grade. If you recall a few years back, some of you won't, unless you were watching at the time, we shifted to doing everyday world language in eighth grade so that our students who were entering high school at level three really had a comparable amount of instructional time.
Do we have level five, six, seven, French?
We have five and six, four, five and six, yes. And one of those would be AP and the other one is just an advanced class.
Would it have made sense to have this textbook, look at this textbook for level five and six as well?
This series does not go there.
They don't go there, okay.
The next one on the list is Advanced Placement Chemistry. And again, our Advanced Placement Chemistry teacher really looked through a lot of series. The one, the TRO series, TRO textbook that he is recommending and I agree with him on, is really well-respected at the university level. The content held within it strongly prepares our students for the AP test and provides them a solid foundation at that beginning college level. As well with our Advanced Placement Environmental Science textbook. The, both the chemistry and the environmental science teachers are part of AP teacher communities and they do reach out within those communities to see how other teachers have been thriving with their students in various textbooks. From their connections within their community as well as their own deep dive and experience with the textbooks, these are the series that they're strongly recommending. I did not have any, sorry, speaking one up to go ahead.
I do not speak French. However, my daughter took, who graduated from University School of Milwaukee, she took French her whole academic career there and this is the program that they use. So I just, I do have experience with this and she sounds French to me.
We did put them out for public review. You could have digital access or you could come on in and look through the physical textbook copies that were here at the district office. I did have a member of the community come in to take a look, but I did not have anybody complete on the feedback information on these exams. I will bring this board in July, at the first board meeting in July to seek approval for purchase. And at that time, I will inform the board based on student numbers and projections for the future. And at that time, I will inform you of what's based on student numbers and projections for the future.
Thank you. So this is a discussion item, and Laura, as you mentioned, we will take action tonight. We'll look forward to this on a future agenda. Any final questions for Laura? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to the action items section of our agenda. And the first is Head Start American Rescue Plan Budget Revision. And Jamie Molson, our administrator at Head Start, is going to present to us tonight. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. This evening, I bring forward Washington County Head Start Internal Budget Revision for our funds, those are the American Rescue Plan Act funds. They were appropriated on March 2021 with a spending deadline of March 2023. The original, let me back up a little bit. Governing law approval is required for any internal budget revisions that exceed $5,000 from one object category to the next. So this is a fairly routine request. Just a very brief overview for you this evening. The majority of the funds in the original budget were in the object category personnel. And that's where it gets a little tricky when we have one-time funds and we're looking at, you know, using that for increasing staffing. But it's just not sustainable in our regular base budget. So the revisions include, the majority of them, moving from personnel to equipment and contractual. And that is to replace very, very old playground equipment that we have at the Ross Education Center. I believe when we got that playground equipment years ago, it was used already. So it's time for something new to update it, make it a little bit safer. We're also looking at replacing some old furniture in the classrooms with the one-time money. And the last piece is kind of an exploration that we're looking at partnering with Camp Silverbrook to do some, 24 actually, nature-based field trips for our eight classrooms over the 22, 23 school year.
Motion to approve the Head Start American Rescue Plan Budget Revision as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve these budget revisions as presented. Any final discussion?
I have a question about the equipment.
Aye.
Is this playground equipment something that could be relocated to a different location in case we decide to do something else with the building?
It is, and somebody might have already gotten some idea of what it would cost to move it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Any other final questions?
I'd like to ask you to come back and talk to us more about the Camp Silverbrook project if it gets off the ground and underway. I've been privy to a little bit of that information being on the policy council, but it's, it sounds really, really cool. I'm glad that you're putting money towards it and hope that it gets off the ground. And if it does, I would love to have you share it forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? I will call a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. We'll move to the next action item, which is preliminary budget for the 22, 23 school year. And Mr. Andy Sarno will walk us through that. Mr. Sarno, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to follow up. Action is requested based on a recommendation at this point in time from two weeks ago. This was brought forward for presentation and discussion. Pull that up real quick. I do have a document on, again, same format that's used in almost all the quarterly updates, the preliminary budget, the budget amendments. I've got the presented or proposed budget for public display. As well, just a really brief, I shared about a four or five slide deck two weeks ago. And just again, for a recommendation of approval at this point in time. The important parts to remember here, some notable items. So enrollment continues to be monitored over the course of the summer, in and out timely, both with enrollment as well as withdrawal. We're making sure that staffing aligns with that. We're being tight because we know that we need to be mindful, not just of this current year that we're just getting into very soon, in about two weeks, but also those future years because of the uncertainty that that next final budget means. We're rightsizing this, we're making sure that we're looking at those student-staff ratios. A lot of the benefits at this point in time are estimates. We're working with our benefit consultants. We're monitoring those. We're making sure that between now and October, those will all be finalized. We'll continue to update that information, potentially even bring that forward as we get into August, gearing up for the annual meeting. I don't want to spoil out the next slide, but we start to talk about some of those important dates. We even look at the instructional delivery, whether that's face-to-face. We're still offering virtual, making sure that we're monitoring those expenditures and how we can effectively and efficiently deliver instruction to all of our students. Mr. Ross came forward in January of '22, as well as Mr. Carter. They have technology as well as facilities projects. We're continuing to roll forward with those, getting final information after bids were solicited, making sure that we're in compliance with that policy, 672. But just finalizing all those technology facilities, taking a look. And this is where I start, what is the really big purpose? This is less formal. What's the purpose of this? It's so we can start doing current expenditures and pay staff that are currently employed, even though we are looking at staff turnover, those folks that are leaving, and hiring replacements where they're appropriate. But how we're delivering over the course of the summer, some of those curriculum and instruction, professional development opportunities that are sometimes difficult to implement during the school year. I should have bolded the last bullet, but just some patience. I think that's always mindful, importantly mindful as we work through some of those estimates and assumptions. Until we get to the point of what our next steps are, we will monitor the state budget. We know what that is for the next year. But even just today, I received information that said, be careful of that 23, 25 school year that was just released today from Governor Evers. We do remember things like that, moving forward and creating the fiscal cliff with the one-year federal stimulus dollars that we're currently using. Making sure that we're prioritizing based on that return documented information that we know that this will work. A couple of next steps, three of them in particular. We have our annual meeting and annual budget hearing on, oh, excuse me, I skipped one. September 3rd, Friday coming, September 16th. We have our annual meeting and budget hearing in September 26th. That was part of recent action that you took, new resolution that allowed for that to happen. And then we'll set that final budget levy in the low rate on Monday, October 24th. And we have that, if anybody would like me to review any of this, we have a balanced general fund budget. I want to make sure that we're covering ourselves at this point in time when we're still being mindful. It's a balancing act at this point in time with staffing, the benefits, making sure that we're being mindful of changes that can be made. But we do have ourselves covered. We'd like to see if we can extend those federal one-time dollars into the next year to help bridge us. So we're being very mindful of that. Questions or discussion?
I would just like to echo what Mr. Thompson spoke on. Can you speak to that at all, on why salaries and stuff are going up so much?
Yeah. You know? So what I would hate is to present, we had our, two years ago, we were at $37.2 million in salaries. That's that top, excuse me, I'm sorry, top orange line that we have here, say how many color? $32.56 million. This year, our amended budget was $33.518. We know that we're going to be declining enrollment. We're rightsizing, monitoring our staffing, staff-to-student ratio. But we also know that there's a looming CPI of 4.7%. I think is the percentage that allowed, the state allows us to discuss with our associations and other employee groups up to that amount. There's been years where we haven't allowed for that. What I wanted to make sure is, Andy, what else did you include in that? There's a very, there is a million dollars, a $1.1 million increase that's meant for some staffing adjustments, a potential CPI. All of that yet to be determined. But what I didn't want is to present a flat, neutral salary or even a decrease and come forward at some point in time and say, I know I already asked for this information back in June, but by the way, that didn't include any type of increase for anybody. It didn't allow for any market adjustments that we're discussing. So I just didn't want to catch anybody off guard. We have ourselves covered, but we're still mindful of what that might mean for negotiating with our teachers association as well as other employee groups.
So my next question is, part of that money that, for those increases are leftover ESER, correct?
ESER dollars that we're going to be using, correct?
So if those weren't available, how would this have been run lead?
We would be making some pretty significant productions.
So, and I mean, is that kind of eye-opening to the financial planning for the next few years? Of, you know, we can't, we can't assume we're going to have that money. So shouldn't we have made some of those adjustments maybe this year?
We have been making adjustments for the last several years.
I think too, in process, like our job right now is just to create a bucket. The board has to dig into each one of those buckets and then you'll have to take action. You have control over that, so we'll have those conversations and kind of delve into that a little bit more. We're just looking at preliminary planning and you can speak to that piece, but it's just really, we have to start our year July 1. We need something preliminary in the books that may or may not get actualized that way. There's so many moving parts there. So there's opportunity for the board on these pieces. What we do here, as you said, will continue to evolve and change. It's just that we need some operational funds for those things in play because we start July 1.
Very accurate, thank you. Any questions? And you'll say it's interesting coming from the private sector because when you talk about a budget, normally, for instance, we would set a budget and that becomes the budget. This is, we set a budget, but there's actually, we don't have all the factors in play. So hence, this is a preliminary budget. And we have through, essentially, I think on the timetable, December, discover more information about it and kind of finalize, actualize the budget. Do I have that anywhere close to correct?
December is when we start looking at the changes from the year we're just then into next year. We project out changes and fluctuations, plus and minus revenues and expenditures. We project out what that deficit may, and again, declining enrollment, limited increases on a year-by-year basis. So historically, we have addressed a projected deficit. So that does start in December. We've been working through that all spring. So we really have until about, we bring forward or formalize the information at September annual budget hearing. And then that between that month that we have remaining is when everything is finalized, by the end of October.
Setting the budget, let's say for salaries today, does not bind us to spend all these in that bucket?
Absolutely. So there are school districts, neighborhood districts across the state that wait for months. So the December reference, there are districts, there's been years in the past where we've waited, not we, but in prior districts, have waited for months to settle. We may even choose to do that at some point in the future in understanding what that next final budget may look like. And not procrastinating, but waiting for more information, make sure we don't put ourselves in a difficult financial position to see what that might look like. Unfortunately, with our state budget, we know that we're not going to really know anything tangible until next, late spring if not early summer, depending on where the election lands and some of those other factors. So we are, we're still in a rush, but we have an obligation to be in good faith with our teachers association as well as our other party groups. But I think this last several years, we have either, depending on the employee group, I mean, it has been as late as December, which I think is our reference.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Other questions?
I just wanted to say also, I kind of, I agree with John and what was mentioned earlier. I just hope that we're being mindful moving forward with some of those one-time funds going towards things like salaries and benefits, that there's something, you know, this will bridge the gap for this year, but there's something in place or other things moving forward as that will be sustainable long-term.
Absolutely. I don't think we can say that enough. And I've reviewed my prior presentations, even dating back to February, when this was, the initial projection was brought forward. We need to be very mindful of that. Called recurring expenditures, so we know that there's expenses we'll have year after year as opposed to one-time use. Buying a heating and ventilating unit that costs X number of dollars that will be good for the next 20, 30 years versus ultimately. So thank you for reiterating that.
Right, we should take action.
Motion to accept the preliminary budget for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second to accept the preliminary budget for the 2022, 23 school year as presented. Any final discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. And Mr. Sarno, you'll walk us through the ESER 3 survey for stakeholders.
I will. And I, not that this has anything to do with ESER 3 and so you can kick me out of, but my wife came home from a big box last Wednesday and indeed, all of the school supplies are already out. So that superintendent when we're updating, it's a final, it's very far off timeline. This was again, information that was brought forward for discussion two weeks ago. This was a required ESER 3, which is the third round of stimulus dollars. It's a requirement for those funds. Universal, if you look from Montana to Maine to Florida, you will see very similar districts across the board soliciting this information. It was discussed. I have received no comments from any board members, community members, business owners over the last two weeks. In the meantime, we'll be working with some internal staff to roll this out, get it posted, the actual live link, get that posted on our website. Above and beyond that, I see a comprehensive rollout to parents and students, potentially separately, but again, same link. Staff, business owners, potentially superintendent working with the chamber, getting that pushed out, and as well, just taxpayers in general because often, we may not be representing all those other groups, which we do ask to clarify who is, who you are representing. It's anticipated potentially to be open for two weeks, compiling that information afterwards and making sure that we're able to incorporate any of that information into a budget where we prioritize that information as was submitted in the information. I do want to make sure that we find that 20% requirement for what's called EBIS, evidence-based intervention strategies, utilization of those dollars for academic learning needs for targeting any COVID-related learning. Happy to have any other questions or discussion, but we are seeking a recommendation to proceed with this.
I have a couple of questions, and this is probably more semantics than anything. But when you were, you know, as you said, a very similar surveys being used, it sounds like across the country. So when you're given the options, so for instance, in number 2, you can select if you're one of these things, is, what, how did you decide to put student first as opposed to business owner first? Like, help me to understand, because what I'm really trying to get to is in number 4, I don't like the way continue to use ESER 2 to deliver a balanced budget is the first thing. Like, I feel like we should either have a system where the answers are either alphabetical and they're alphabetical for every single question so that there's no question of we were leading anyone in any one way. Or there should be like a rhyme or reason to like, why were students first versus business first? Like, that's my commentary there. And I mean, to me, it would make the most sense to say all answers were listed alphabetically in every question and there's really no, I mean, that is the rhyme and reason. It's alphabetical and it's easy to calculate.
I think that's an easy amendment to do. So given that feedback, if you want to approve that tonight, we can make that change in all of those and just note that as an answer, all items presented in alpha order.
Thank you.
Other thoughts, questions? Joel?
Motion to accept the ESER 3 engagement survey with the amendment that answers be listed alphabetically.
Second, motion and second to accept the engagement survey as amended. Any final discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Appreciate it. Thanks for your presentations. We will move on to third reading policies in the 500 series. This has been in the works for a while. And Superintendent Limer, you will walk us through. I think we're, well, I'll leave it to you how to move through these three. But we're talking about third reading policies in the 500 series.
These would be the third reading and action for policies. We did take them by buckets because we talked about that interplay. So in the first one, you can see a couple that had no changes to the language and then some slight revisions. So those up for review and revision are listed. We've had a couple of prior presentations and discussion. So if there's no additional questions on those, we'd be seeking to approve those, that review and revision. So the two with no change, they would just show the update that it was reviewed on date in there. And the others will then include the revisions on the markup copies there.
Any questions? Move to approve the review and revisions policies in the 500 series as presented. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Motion second to approve the review and revisions policies in the 500 series as presented. Final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next segment of the 500 series, again, navigating personnel, were substantial new language. That was a lot legal template. We can again have local control over utilizing that template and refining that for our needs. So they were substantial in review, so we would consider them new language, so adopting those. And they are connected to the ones that were sunsetting. So in that next bucket, even though I have them separately, you know, it looks like we're sunsetting quite a few policies, but they are connected to the new language. So it's really, it was a substantial replacement and update.
Any questions? I move to approve the new language policies in the 500 series as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Nancy, motion second to approve the new language of policies in the 500 series as presented. Final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that final, given the acceptance of the new language, those other revisions, we would want to sunset any competing policy or language. Those are listed there for you with those references.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the removal of policies of 500 series as presented.
Second. Motion and second to approve the removal of the policies as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thanks to the other members of the policy committee for a bit of heavy lifting on this one. And for those those at home who might think, wow, they moved through that very quickly. This group has, this group has seen these over the last several, several months, so thank you for your work on that.
Superintendent, can you remind the board and the public, once we approve and delete and remove, how soon are these put on our policy website? Where is the safe source? Are we using Board Docs in the policy tab or do we still use our district website?
So as we move through the update, we're kind of on the backend building the Board Doc. So if you go right to our website, it's under School Board and all policies are listed. And you can chunk them. So this is the 500 series. You can click on that 500 tab. They're all there live. These will be updated, given board action. We generally update them within the week. We do have a little time built into our policy to update those, but it's just good practice to get them enrolling as soon as possible. We are, we made a concerted effort. So Mr. Donaldson, Mr. Ongert, Mr. Swiger, when you talk about kind of the commitment for their policy work, we've got some accelerated meetings, just so we can move through and really update all policy series so that we can get back on track of a more just cycle where we're not having to do, as you said, kind of the heavy lift. So as soon as we have that built, we'll probably have them duly represented. Some might be used to seeing them in that, but it'll be very easy to access them in Board Docs as well, so.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to the next agenda item, which feels like our future agenda item, starting with our board meeting calendar. So this board will hold regular meetings at 5:30 PM here at the Education Service Center on July 11, July 25. Curriculum committee meeting is scheduled for July 19, 8:30 AM at the Education Service Center. Superintendent, the July 11 meeting, I know on the preliminary calendar was considered a perhaps optional meeting. Are we thinking we're going to move forward with that or yet to be determined?
Yes, we would like to continue having that scheduled, but it might be brief.
No, that's, that's fine. I will just mention to the board that there was a 50/50 shot on July 11th that I'll have a work obligation, so keep the board posted. Any questions on the calendar?
I definitely have a work obligation on that date.
Hearing none. Questions? Any items for follow-up and communication? Phil, I think you talked about the Camp Silverbrook project as a potential follow-up in the future.
Yeah, that's, if you're not familiar with Camp Silverbrook, it's a Girl Scout camp on the far west side of the Cora Road, correct? Kind of dead ends there and then takes them, and many people in town have not even been back there because if you don't have a Girl Scout or reason to be on that property, but it is absolutely gorgeous. And they reached out to our Head Start program to utilize the property more when they aren't using it. And so it's not, it's not a done deal yet, but there's, there's leadership in our school district talking to the Girl Scouts and potentially, you know, outdoor field trips to that property. There's a lake back there and it's on, I don't know, several hundred acres. So it's, it would be really cool if it could happen and that's why I asked, if it does happen, let's hear about it, so.
So other items, so just talking about Camp Silverbrook, that nature-based play and kind of how that's going. But other pieces were the ACT data, as soon as that's out of embargo, to bring that back. And just a reminder to the board, I know we talked about it in the last meeting, but we are kind of preparing that end-of-year behavior presentation to be comprehensive. So just a reminder, if you have any other feedback items outside of our discussion, to get that to me so we can build that presentation. So those were some upcoming items.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you. Any other questions on items for follow-up and communication? All right, hearing none. We have one or more items that are appropriately discussed in executive session. So I move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises of responsibility and take such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely compensation and employment. Is there a second?
A second.
Melanie, motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Final discussion? This is a roll call vote to enter into executive session, so I will call the roll. Ms. Justin?
Yes.
Ms. Arbat?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yep.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger, yes. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
And Mr. Repoltz is absent. That motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned into executive session. Thank you for those who joined us.